Okay, at this time I'll call our meeting to order and I'll ask the clerk if she would call to establish a quorum of the board, please.
Mr. Blakewell?
Present.
Mr. Askew?
Here.
Jeremy Whitfield?
Here.
Mr. Hart?
Here.
Mr. Thorp?
Present.
All right, thank you. All board members are here tonight, and we do have the agenda, some agenda packets out there. Also, the last minute, there's an update on the Hinkle Fire Station we'll be covering, so you can pick one of those up on your way out tonight if you don't already have that second attachment piece. But the board has the agenda. This was published to the public last Friday. It's been on the website. Is there any issues or any modifications to the agenda tonight?
No, sir.
Hearing none, do we have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
So, motion approved.
We have a motion by Commissioner Stoltz. Do we have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Commissioner Hart. Any further discussion of the board on the agenda? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the agenda is approved as presented. We do have our minutes from our last meeting here, held on January the 11th, 2024, at 7:00. And this has been in the packet. Is there any modifications, corrections, or changes to the minutes? Hearing none, do we have a motion to approve the minutes as presented by the clerk?
Motion to approve.
A motion by Commissioner Blake Moore. Do we have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Commissioner Askew. Any further discussion on the minutes? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the minutes are approved as presented. Okay, this time we have, if you're not on the agenda, we allow you to make any public comments. Is there anyone that would like to come up and speak before the Board of Commissioners? We do ask you, when you come up and speak, that you limit your time to five minutes, and we request that you talk about things that we can make a difference or have an impact on. We can't fix things internationally, or national, or in other states, or other communities. So, just use your time wisely, we would request. But you do get up to five minutes. Is anyone that would like to come speak tonight? Yes, sir. Please come up and state your name for the record.
Stanley Matthews, Chickamauga. I just wanted to follow up on our last conversation from two weeks ago. And again, I want to reiterate to everyone, this has nothing to do with an individual. I'm concerned about the Enabling Act and the process involved in that, and the answers that you gave, and those type of things. This has nothing to do about the individual at all. I want to stay focused on the process that took place. So anyway, it appears the job that I'm referring to is the executive administrative job that you said was posted with a change of words. And I did a Freedom of Information request, as is normal. And Joe always does an excellent job with providing the information. And it appears the administrative job was posted back on July 27th. And he provides those and basically goes along, received, I think you said 50 to 60 resumes.
Something in that range.
And then this young lady, Gabrielle, that was hired, it appears her resume is what you chose. And it appears that she submitted two different resumes. I don't know, I've looked at the difference. There is a difference, almost like, I don't understand that. But typically, you submit a resume with your best case and go forward. But in this case, there was two different ones. It's almost like she was asked to redo it or something. I don't know.
No, she applied in August, and then she reapplied, I think it was in October.
There's no dates on this material.
On the application that she also completed, the dates are on the application, and it references in the attachment of the application that the resume was attached to the application. Because all this is done online in our systems, when someone applies.
Yes, sir.
They can complete the application, and then they attach the resume. So Joe would have, you know, the paper trail, the electronic records that she applied twice.
I understand completely. And you informed us that the proper process was followed. HR was definitely involved. And I commend you. When you came into office, I think we've got 435 employees. And you established an HR department, which I believe, you'll know better than me, that we never had. And you established a protocol that plainly goes through the drug testing, all this type of stuff, the completed, submitted, no application would be considered without resume being submitted to HR. The drug test, background, normal stuff. But it appears that none of that took place prior to her employment, based on the information that was requested, that was provided by your office. When you get into the employment letter, you offered her the job of Executive Administrative Assistant at a salary of $42,000. And I ask you if our employees had a chance to apply, and if the other applicants were interviewed, and this was the only person interviewing. And you said they did. It don't appear, based on the information provided, that there was that opportunity. By the email chain, it appears that HR was never contacted by you at all. There was no communications. It appears that our media specialist, Joe Leggie, does all the posting, which I find, spending 12 years in the corporate world, kind of odd that HR wouldn't be involved with the job posting. But you're the CEO, and you choose how to run it, and I respect that. Again, it's about the process and how it's done against the Enabling Act, because you created a position that was not budgeted for, clearly. I'm not against the position. I'm about helping in any way I can. I'm concerned about the Enabling Act, and we're three years into it, and it appears that it doesn't matter. Appears. I'm not accusing it, just appears. So, the first contact with any HR is 30 days after she was hired. And she hadn't even completed any of your testing that you put in place, or nothing. How does that happen?
Her first contact with HR was the day that she started, which was her orientation, and the HR manager conducted the orientation her first morning that she started.
That was asked to be put off?
No, it was done, every employee goes through orientation.
So when you ask, that's the policy, that's not what was followed?
That's what took place. We can document that.
Then either something's been withheld from my request, the email chain's incorrect, or the information's incorrect, because she specifically asked for her orientation to be put off, and you informed her that it was fine.
Well, the day she started was the day her orientation took place, and we'll provide you that information.
So when she says that she asked for it to be put off because we, referring to you and her, are not going to be here, she's not employed at that time?
She had a personal reason with a family member that was going through some medical stuff.
I saw that.
So she asked for her start date to be delayed, and so we delayed her start date. But her orientation, as all employees started on her first day, we'll provide that. But at this time, you're out of time, so we're going to have to end, we'll take this up, and we'll get you some more information.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else that'd like to speak? Yes, sir. Please state your name.
Jamie Holsey, 6765 South Highway 341. I'd like to feed on his comments about the hiring. So you put the HR process in place at Walker County, right? So is it known to every employee that internally you can apply, internally if you qualify, you will be interviewed? How did that process go? Because has anybody complained internally, and did they apply from internal for that position?
I'm not having any complaints. But when I took over in 2017, we found employees that were hired that didn't even have an application on file. There was no system, no practice, no program.
I understand. What we're talking about today.
So we put this in place, and we got to the point, we've automated it enough where a person doesn't have to physically come in, they can do it electronically and apply. So that goes to our team that handles all of our internal communications, which is Joe Leggie and his staff member. So those come in, and then they put them in a shared document file that the department manager can see those, the HR can see those, I can see those. And so they can scroll and view those applications and our resumes electronically. That way, they're logged, and their time index stamped of when they've been received into the system. And then we're not having to send out paper copies to get them.
Well, by the time I got, so did anybody look at all the applicants and say, well, we're just going to interview one?
Yes, I did. I went through and looked at all the resumes and all the applications to look at.
And had many qualified out of all of them?
I only felt like there was one applicant that met the qualifications of what we were looking for.
And do you have any standards that you go by? Do you have a grading system for somebody to come in and say, okay, you heard this one had 50 applicants, yeah, you might have preferred MBA, I don't know. But with that being said, if you have at least two or three applicants, you know, you choose the best one. Optics is terrible, I can tell you that, with anybody that's been in the corporate world, that you post a job. I understand budget. Board shouldn't have anything to do with budget, except approve it. And if it's approved, to hire personnel, which I think the board should know that as well, well, you're free to go hire whoever you want. But then you get to the process and the policy of hiring, and non-discrimination, equality, things like that, and out of the blue, the public knows you just hired somebody that you might have personally known, changed the title right of the name, title on the name, and also probably paid them more than you intended to pay the administrative assistant. So I'm not saying optics look terrible. And really, the process is terrible, because I imagine if one of those people that applied out of 40, 50 people to say, that's discrimination, I didn't even get a chance, I made qualifications. There always has to be, this is not 1950 anymore, it's 2024, is it? Okay. So, again, so am I speaking to you as county manager or chairman of the board, right now? Where's your answer coming from?
My position by the Enabling Act is the chairman and the CEO of the county.
Okay, okay. Answered as the county manager, then. What was your process, and why did you not choose to interview any more folks that qualify for the job?
Well, I've had other people that I felt like were outstanding candidates.
No, no. They're just processing HR, filtering through people that qualify for a job, non-discrimination, to say, okay, you're the best for the job, nobody can ask any questions. But it seems unfair, optics are terrible, and this mixture of management and chairman of the board is, I'm not in favor of that. So, my time's up, 112. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else that'd like to speak? Okay, we'll move on our agenda here. And we do have a presentation tonight by Bridge Health. So Kathy, right?
No, Kathy's not here.
Kathy, I'm sorry.
She just scheduled the appointment.
Well, y'all come on out, at least y'all introduce yourselves, so I don't make it worse.
My name is Patrick McBride. I'm the chief operating officer at Bridge Health. Our chief executive officer, Heather Rosener, could not be here tonight. She wishes she could be, but unfortunately was not able to make it. Heather Ramsey, our chief financial officer, I guess she didn't have anything to do this evening, so she thought she would come and back me up in my endeavor. We just wanted to come and talk about what we do a little bit, talk about some of the programs that we have. I know it probably scared every one of y'all when I gave you all this, and it looks like this. But don't worry, I'm not going to go line by line. I just wanted you to have this information. There's actually a lot more information I can give you. We have a multitude of programs, varying everything from our mental health outpatient clinics, our accountability court, which has a drug and a mental health court, to Trek Foster Parent Program, which has been highly successful in foster parenting, our Intellectual Developmental Disabilities Program, which is located on Lee Clarkson in Chickamauga. We also have in Somerville and Chautauqua County as well. So I just kind of wanted to walk through some of the things that we do, and come and talk to you, because we've been getting out to all the county commissioners of the four counties that we serve. And, you know, you may or may not know exactly what a community service board is. A lot of people do not know. They were created by the Georgia Legislature as public corporations and instrumentals of the state to provide services for mental illness, intellectual developmental disabilities, which I'll call ADD, and/or addictive diseases. There are 22 across the state of Georgia, with boards of directors appointed by the governing authorities of the counties within the CSB area. You may or may not know it, but sometime this year, you're going to be saddled with the responsibility of two board members that are coming up term. Eddie Upshaw, who comes up towards the end of the year, and Neil Florence, who's coming up, I think at the end of June. So both of those are nearing the end of their term. Damon Range is also on the board. He will serve as long as he is a superintendent of Walker County Schools. We are part of the Georgia Public Safety Net. And when people ask, you know, what is a safety net? What is that for? That is so that we can serve individuals who have no insurance, or limited to no means to pay for treatment. So it's so, so people don't fall through the cracks. It's the idea behind that. Now, we do not currently provide medical services. We provide mental health services, we provide ADD services, and addictive disease services. Something we're looking to become is a CBHCC, which I'm probably going to get this wrong, it's a community health.
Critical care behavioral health clinic.
Behavioral health clinic. It's a thing on a national level that's going on, that we applied for last year, come up short, will apply for it again this year. If we go that route, we will also be providing primary care services. So that is something that, I guess, it's the big thing right now going on amongst CSBs, not just in the state of Georgia, but nationally. We also serve people with Medicaid, individuals with other insurances are served based on our capacity. So right now, we just serve uninsured, Medicare, and Medicaid individuals. So we are not serving private insurance individuals at this point. We looked at it at one time, the issue comes down to our clinicians being board certified and panelled with the individual insurance companies. The problem we have is, because we're state affiliated, I guess is a good way to put it, we're not really called a state agency, I call us a hybrid agency. We have clinicians come in, get their licensure, work for a while, and then run on to greener pastures where they can make higher salaries and better, they think a better use of their time. So because of that, they're not really there long enough to be panelled many times. They come, they go. We have to go recruit more clinicians, which is a nightmare, not just for us, nationally. It is hard getting qualified mental health licensed staff to serve. Let's see if I can go to this next page. And I wish I had printed off more of these. The overview kind of talks about some of the things we do, our outpatient counselling, family and group counselling, peer support services, adult day programs, medication management. We have an in-school Apex program, which serves in several of the four counties, the foster care program. We have a housing program, which I'll talk a little bit more about later. We have our accountability court, supported employment. You can see, it goes on. We are very diversified in everything that we do. We have approximately, and I may be off a couple of numbers, 198 full-time employees. So, you know, we have quite a few people. And that is across Walker, Chautauqua, Catoosa, and Dade, so it's across the four counties. We're accredited by CARF, which is a very tough accreditation that we go through. Every three years, we have to meet very strict standards for them, as well as the Department of Behavioral Health and Developmental Disabilities, and the Center for Medicare and Medicaid Services. So, you know, we're constantly under audit. We're constantly looking at processes and policies, you know, and how we can better meet the standards that they're putting out. We have eight board members. We have three from Walker County, Neil, Eddie, and Damon. They're normally appointed by county commissioners. I didn't even know if y'all realized that today. That's why I thought, hey, some people may be surprised, and we tell them that tonight. But that'll be coming up. I don't know if any of those two are even eligible to be reappointed. They're not. So, they maxed out their time on the board. They've both have been excellent members. I think Neil's actually the chair right now of the board. The next page, you can kind of see how the CSBs are spread out. You can see us up here in the upper corner. Notice some CSBs are really, really big, some of us are not so big. A lot of the real large ones have combined with other community service boards, either due to poor management or other reasons. Highland Rivers below us, they weren't too big at one time, and they've combined with one of the ones north of Atlanta, which has made them much larger than what they were. You know, one thing that's big with us is serving the rural counties. There's a lot of rural space, not just in Walker, Dade, Chautauqua, and Catoosa. And that is a big thing, because for so long, people living in the rural areas just haven't had the same access. Now, a lot of that's changed. You know, the use of telehealth has made that much more possible than it was at one time. And I think with COVID, it kind of showed that, because telehealth becomes such a popular way to be seen. The way she just looked at me, I know COVID is a dirty word, so. And we all struggled during it, you know, we were no different. But we were lucky that we were able to quickly kind of transition into a work-from-home telehealth mode, so we could still see our most needy individuals during that time. So I was actually very impressed. During that time, I was over the IT team, and I was serving a CO, which was totally different than what I do now. I still oversee IT, but from a much different level. But I was very proud of how everybody came together. And it was a lot of hard work on our part, and also a lot of foresight by our former CEO, Tom Ford. We kind of saw it coming. So we were able to kind of prepare for it. So when it actually hit, we were like, yeah, at least we can kind of cut over. You know, we'd go into voiceover IP phones, we had done things like that. So we tried to be very proactive, because we understand how important it is to many individuals, you know, that they are seen as they need to be, that they get their medication like they need to get it, things such as that. So, you know, poverty is also a big issue. If you look, the state of Georgia, the average poverty rate per county is 14.2%. Walker County, we're right on that, right at 14.2%. So once again, we're providing that safety net for those individuals who might not be able to seek services anywhere else. Uninsured individuals, the same way. Now, the state of Georgia itself ranks higher than the United States as a whole, as you can see. But persons uninsured under 65, Walker's right at 17%. The US as a whole is 9.8%.
The US as a whole is what?
9.8.
Oh, I hear you.
Now, I'm not a clinical expert. My guess would be probably because, no, because Georgia's got Medicaid statewide. I was going to say, I'm thinking Tennessee, you know, Tennessee never pushed Medicaid statewide. So I'm not sure why the difference in the number, or why you'd see that gap. Looking at our agency statistics, you can see that we saw 1,842 individuals from Walker County in 2023. You can compare that to the other counties that we see. You know, we only saw 736 from Catoosa, 866 from Chautauqua. Now, the other counties was 889, that's going to include Dade. My guess, sometimes we get some follow-up from Whitfield, even though Highland Rivers is that area. We occasionally will get individuals from Whitfield who will come to see us. Every now and then, we'll actually get somebody who just wants to pay cash from Tennessee. So, excuse me, I went out of town for a few days, and my COVID came back. One thing we are proud of is our accountability court services. We started it in 2017 with a drug court, and just started the mental health court in 2020. I will tell you, if you've never been to a drug court graduation, you should go to one. When I first took this role, Heather invited me to one, and it was really something to see those individuals, how they changed their lives. And you can see the difference, it may not just to them, but to their families as a whole. So I urge you to do that if you have not. Housing programs, we offer two different housing programs. We have a Georgia Housing Voucher, and then we have what used to be called a Shelter Plus Care. Now, they made a much longer name out of it, GHLFA Permanent Supportive Housing Program. Now, with that, we have 37 units spread over three counties. Those are usually funded by the Department of Housing and Urban Development, as well as administered by the Department of Community Affairs. We've had very, very good luck with that in the past. 103 individuals have been served, 53 individuals have moved into their own permanent housing, less than five individuals have returned to homelessness. But there's been challenges now. Of course, there is a growing homeless population. Rural homelessness is also a problem. And funding, like the current grant is contracted for 27, 26 units, but we have 37 units. So what do we do? Do we just tell 11 people, you know, 11 families, you're out, you know? So, right now, we're projected to exceed that grant funding by $87,000 this year, in increases in the cost of living, including rent, utilities, insurance, et cetera. And if you look at our estimated cost for 2024, you can see, you're looking at $354,000 in rent total, $81,000 in utilities, for total expenses of $348. The PSH grant will pay $260, which leaves us about 87 grand in the hole. That is a concern to us, because that has been a very successful program, and something that we have been, I'll tell you what really hurt us, is I hadn't been in this position no time, and I was kind of getting my feet wet, and my CEO came in my office and slapped this stuff down on my desk, and said, well, here's your something to work on. And I'm like, what is it? Well, all these rents have just been raised like 25% for all these people, because the management company that owned them sold out to somebody else. And the first thing they did was raise the rent on everybody. So, you know, that immediately up the prices of everything, and put us further in the hole. So, we tried working along with them and negotiating, with no luck, but we are moving forward. And, you know, we're just like the city. We try applying for a lot of grants and things, because any time you can get grant funding to help pay for things, you know, it's huge. When I was on the IT side, we saved nearly $2 million over seven years on fiber and other things, utilizing USAC and the Rural Healthcare Program. So, you know, we try to use anything we can, grant funding-wise. Something else we have that I just wanted to mention was, Catoosa County has the co-response program. And what we've done, working alongside Highland Rivers, we started riding along with the Sheriff's Department in the spring of 2023. And it's been successful. We've had at least six known instances where deadly force was averted, 13 instances where de-escalation led to force being averted. So it has been successful in that aspect. I will say this, the very first night they had it, the guy went for the ride alone, and apparently, somebody shot at him. So he got past it. I hate to say if that guy didn't last in that position very long, but I probably wouldn't have either. So. But we're also working, have just implemented a jail in-reach program to provide counselling to inmates. And this has been funded by Catoosa County. Sheriff Sisk went to the county, and more or less got the money for that. He wanted to have that in the jails, as well as working on the co-response. And I think if Heather was here, she would be remiss if she didn't mention what she would like to see, and I think it would all, I think her dream is to have a CSU in this area. So a crisis stabilization unit in the four county area. And I think that's also on Sisk's great heart. And it's something that the DBHDD Commissioner Tanner seems to be big on. He's opened a few in the state, but it's something that we constantly let him know that, you know, if you ever decide to put one up this way, it would be a great thing to have. Because so many of these people, I don't think they just need to go straight into incarceration, they need treatment. And the accountability court has shown in some ways how that can work. And ADD services, I mentioned it briefly, you know, we have Chickamauga and Somerville, we have a Dade program, we have family supports, we have supported employment, who help the ones who can get jobs, and they can be very successful. Behavioral services, residential services, and then individual and group activities. And that is a great program for us. It was very, very large prior to COVID. Since COVID, some people have been a little hesitant to come back, as I can understand. Also, since COVID, we had some go other places, because we didn't start transportation as quick as others did. And I think they just, somebody else came in and just more or less offered free transportation is what it come down to. So. And then the need for mental health care. Now, Georgia ranked 24th in suicide deaths in the US. Suicide rates increased 7.6% between 2020 to 2022. Suicide was responsible for 49,449 deaths in 2022, one death every 11 minutes. Suicide affects people of all ages. In 2021, it was among the top nine leading causes of death of people ages 10 to 64. Suicide was the second leading cause of death for people ages 10 to 14 and 20 to 34. And I will tell you this, when I was younger, I never thought much about people committing suicide. In the past 10 years, I've had a guy who I played ball with in school, I went to high school at Rossford, I think you'll see it on the thing, he committed suicide after depression. In 2019, my father committed suicide at age 79, because he thought he had cancer, and he didn't want his kids to have to take care of him. Didn't even go to the doctor. The day after Father's Day, killed himself. I found him laid in the bed, full of blood. So it affects everybody. Drug overdoses, number one cause of death for individuals aged 25 to 44 in our four county area, according to the Georgia Department of Public Health. In 2021, 107,000 people died from drug overdoses, making it a leading cause of injury-related deaths in the United States, according to CDC. According to HRSA, Walker County suffered 19 overdose deaths from June 2022 to May 2023. Suicide issues and mental health issues have significant impacts on people, families, communities, and societies. impacts on people, families, communities, and societies. And the last slide is how you can support us. And that's always the toughest part to talk about. You know, mental health and substance usage has sharply increased since COVID. I mean, think about it. A lot of people were cooped up in their houses for a long time. Strain on the current workforce. We are a mental health professional shortage area for primary care as well as mental health. Lack of affordable housing. Four county area lacks a public homeless shelter and we have a growing homeless population. Transportation's a primary barrier to those who seek our services. Follow-up calls to individuals served who miss appointments, lack of transportation is the number one reason offered. And reimbursement rates. For our mental health professionals, these are people who are licensed, they go to school, normally they get a master's degree, they get their licensure. The rates were last dated 2008. So when you're wondering why financially, mental health agencies are struggling, well, take a look at our rates. Now, they started a rate study last year. So, a rate study is underway. But to my knowledge, they've not given us a timetable yet for when, for the results or when that might change. So, we wanted to come to you today to talk about the services that we offer and also ask that you keep us in mind for future budgets or allocations, you know, for things, especially like the homeless program. The home, I hate to call it a homeless program, the housing program that we have because it's been so valuable for us. And what we were able to do in the past is we were able to take this funding because our rent was lower, we would take it, we could get extra housing. Well, we're having a hard time now just keeping the housing that we're having because they refuse to increase the budgets. And I know transportation's another big thing. I know Walker Transit's probably facing the same thing that we are, where they cut transit, transportation budgets, not what they used to be. So, but that's what we come to ask, that you consider that. I would love to talk to anybody individually or as a team and discuss further what we do. Heather, anytime you want to call either one of us, our numbers are on there. We'd love to get with you guys and discuss it.
A question for you.
Yes, sir.
Talking about homeless, do we, and I may have overlooked it, I was trying to, do we have an estimated number of the homeless like per county like in Walker County?
You know, I don't have that number for me.
I didn't think I saw it, but I was just curious if you had.
There has to be one. I know there has to be an estimation.
Okay.
I just don't have it. I wish I did because that's actually, and honestly, it may be something that, to make you feel better, this was about 40 pages before Heather got ahold of it earlier. And she's like, "Yeah, I don't think you need this. I don't think you need this. I don't think you need this." So she chopped it down a little bit for me because the idea wasn't to go through everything line by line. It was just to hit those points and explain what we do and why we feel like we offer a valuable service to the community. And we've got 198 employees who, if you come and watch some of our sites work, if you would come to our IDD site and watch how they work with those IDD individuals, it's touching is the word I use. Because when I first started here, I came from a Fortune 500 company. And honestly, when I took this job, in my head, 16 years ago, it was probably just another step. You know, I was just gonna stay here for a little while and go somewhere else. But I went to the DD site, my second or third day here, and watched how they worked with those individuals and the difference that it made. And that's why I went home that night and told my wife, this is where I was supposed to be. I said, you know, I felt like this is where I've been led to. And 16 years later, I'm still here. So, apparently they've not decided to kick me out yet or something's going okay. But...
Any other questions?
Yes, sir. Where are the locations of the outpatient mental health clinics in Walker County?
We do some outpatient work still over here at my street. It's not a full-time like it used to be because we have the Accountability Court there too.
Down, down, where the old mountain used to be?
Yes, yes.
Okay, okay.
So we have that site. And then, of course, we have a recovery site over here on East Villanale.
Okay.
806, 608. So, we do our recovery services over there.
Okay.
And then, of course, we have our outpatient clinics at the other individual. We have the one on the main road in Somerville. We have the one at Fant Drive in front of us.
Fant, okay.
And then the one in Trenton on North Main Street.
So if an individual is seeking mental health services, do they need a referral or can they just pick up the phone or can they walk in for an assessment? Or what would that process be?
I think the easiest thing to do is to pick up the phone.
Okay.
And because they can also walk in. But if they pick up the phone, they can schedule it. And I think what that's gonna do, that's gonna, that's gonna take away some of that just sitting time, having to wait behind people. Because nobody likes to go in a doctor's office and wait. I mean, I'm the worst about that.
And in uninsured folks, so basically, would they be charged on a, like a fee schedule or sliding scale or something like that?
Yes, yes. It is sliding scale.
Okay.
Correct?
So actually, like in the first 60 days, it can be stayed contracted.
Okay.
And they can pay that way in the interim to where they see if they can get approved for Medicare or if they're gonna end up being private paying. But typically, they don't pay anything when they first come in.
Okay. And as far as meds, if a person receives a prescription, do you guys have an in-house pharmacy that you fill?
We have, Genowares, we used to have a lookout mountain before Bridge Pharmacy. And what we did is, Genowares Pharmacy took that over. So we do have them and they do actually deliver to the sites.
Okay.
So, you know, it saves having to drive up to there because they can make delivery.
And so, is the med fee included in that or is it comped or how does that handle?
That's a question I do not have an answer to.
That actually goes through the pharmacy.
Yeah. And I would tell you this, I've watched the pharmacy work. If there is some way to get a discount for an individual on their medication, they're gonna get it.
I get it.
Because I've heard them talk about it. I've heard nurses talk about it, about some of the miracles they can work with medication.
Well, you guys do great work and appreciate what you do and take care of a lot of folks.
Well, we appreciate you guys taking the time to listen to us today. And if anybody has any questions, please feel free to reach out.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you. Okay, on our agenda, new business. Our first resolution is a Resolution R-004-24, a resolution of the Walker County Board of Commissioners to authorize the Walker County Historic Preservation Commission to file a grant application for historic resource survey. Whereas the Board of Commissioners of Walker County Board is the governing authority of Walker County, Georgia, and whereas the board reestablished the Walker County Historic Preservation Commission, the commission on March the 11th, 2021, for the purpose of preserving historic resources in our community. And whereas, one of the functions of the commission is to maintain an inventory of all the properties within the county designated as historic or having the potential for designation as historic. And whereas, in order to qualify for state grants relating to historic preservation, a new historic resource survey must be completed. And whereas, the commission requests authority to pursue a grant to conduct a historic resource survey and agrees to complete the application and interview historic survey consultants capable of completing this task. Therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Walker County, Georgia, does hereby authorize Walker County Historic Preservation Commission to file a grant application with the Georgia Department of Community Affairs Historic Preservation Division to fund a new historic resources survey. If others are resolved, the board agrees to provide 40% match required for the grant through in-kind services. So resolved and adopted the 25th day of January 2024. So this was a formal request by the Historic Preservation Commission and this will get them some grant funding to do the survey. And then, once the survey and all is completed, that kind of puts them in a position to pursue other grant opportunities that may come for them. So, any questions?
No, sir.
Hearing none. We have a motion to approve this resolution.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion by Commissioner Blake Moore. Do we have a second?
Second.
A second by Commissioner Stoltz. Any further discussion of the board?
No, sir.
Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Resolution is approved. The next we have is our Resolution R-005-24, a resolution of the Walker County Board of Commissioners to amend the fiscal year 2024 budget to appropriate funds for the Walker County Coroner's Office. Whereas the Board of Commissioners of Walker County Board is the governing authority of Walker County, Georgia, and whereas OCGA 36-81-3D requires any increase in appropriations at the legal level of control of government, whether accomplished through a change in expense revenue in any fund or through a transfer of appropriations among departments, shall require the approval of the governing authority by ordinance or resolution. And whereas the Walker County Coroner's Office is legally constituted its department, Walker County Government, and is in need of funds to provide transportation services to out-of-town crime labs. Therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of Walker County, Georgia hereby reallocate $3,470 in the FY 2024 budget from 100-3700-521300.95, which is technical contractual services, to the following general ledger numbers. So I'll just read those. Salary and wages for $2,500, social security contribution $155, Medicare for $40, retirement contribution $700, workers' compensation $75. So resolved and adopted the 25th day of January 2024. And our coroner's here with us this evening. Would you like to come up and speak to your request, sir?
My name is Billy Sims. I'm the Walker County Coroner. Thank y'all for letting me come up. What this is gonna do, gentlemen, is I'm taking contract labor money and putting it in salary money. Me and Terry are starting to do our own transport back to the crime lab. Last week, I'd done three trips. He'd done one. That's gonna cut down on the third party. I can't cut them completely out because you never know, vehicles tear up or whatever. I may need some help here or there. But we're starting to make our own transportation. And I would have done that before now, but we didn't have enough vehicles. Now, since I got my new truck, thanks to the board, thanks to everybody, it finally got here. And I got down to shop today, so we're ready to go with it. But all we're doing is moving, no, I'm not asking for any extra money. I'm just asking to move from one spot to the other so we can take care of that.
Yeah. And I have met with Billy and the deputy coroner. I think they've got a real good plan. Personally support what they're trying to do. And I think this is gonna be a net savings in the end, hopefully. And I know it's kind of hard to know, but it's a net neutral, so it's not changing their budget. But since we're taking operational funds, which is a budget category, we're moving it to personnel funds. That's a separate category. So that would come before the Board of Commissioners to give approval to, since we're just moving that. So it's, you know, it's a total of $3,470. And there's an additional spreadsheet as well that shows a little bit more detail that would show, you know, what the 24 adopted budget is, the amount that's being amended, and then what the final amended budget would be. And then that gets uploaded into the database. So when we print out a budget activity report that he gets each month, he can see exactly where he is and gives good tracking. And so this, I think's a good plan.
And also, gentlemen, I've got with, we got with the Catoosa County Coroner, Walker County, I mean, Chautauqua, Dade, and we all work together. If I'm going out of town with a body to the crime lab, either Catoosa County Coroner or Dade County Coroner or Chautauqua County Coroner has got my back till I get back. That way, we're not paying any deputy coroners to cover. I cover for them, they cover for me. So it's kind of a group package there that we can save money on that standpoint.
Very good. Any questions?
Billy, are you fully staffed on your deputy coroner's?
Yes, I got four deputy coroners. I got chief deputy, as Terry Robertson, Darren Kelly resigned after he got married, which is, I can understand that. And then I have Bo Pace, and then I have Neil Brown.
And Bo and Neil would be available to do some out-of-town.
Yes, well, yeah, if they're off from the regular, of course, they have full-time jobs. So, me and Terry, Terry has a full-time job. So what I do is I make the calls during the week to Atlanta. And then Terry's off on the weekends. So if we have one come up on the weekends, he'll take it.
Okay.
Kind of give me a break.
Appreciate it.
Any other questions? Hearing none. Do we have a motion to approve resolution as presented?
Motion to approve, as presented.
We have a motion by Commissioner Stoltz. Do we have a second?
Second.
A second by Commissioner Blake Moore. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Resolution's approved.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
One other thing I'd like to give y'all. And y'all can look it over and get back with me. But I'm in dire need of office space. And we've all talked about this. And y'all can study that over. I've got my office in my wife's and I have personal business now and it does not need to be there. So, we've all hashed out different places for me to go and it hasn't worked out where we should. But you guys, please take a look at that and get back with me and we'll go again.
Billy, is the Health Department, is that?
No, the Health Department, the Health Department was gonna let me move in, but I talked to Shannon, or Commissioner, about that. And I was told an ambulance service, and which that makes sense because we need a unit on this side to get to where Brian Lee over on Villanale and places. So, there we're gonna look and see for some other places that I could go in there. I just need an office to make sure all those records, you know, you used to be a deputy coroner.
Sure.
I've got records and medical records and social securities and stuff that don't need to be where anybody else can get ahold of.
Well, Billy, if you'll recall, we talked about that. I mentioned we were working toward that ambulance service, but we were still gonna go over there and look.
Yeah, and we haven't had a chance to go. And it's true, all of y'all. We looked at the Drug Task Force building, trailer. Well, after me and Commissioner Stoltz and Commissioner Whitfield went, you're looking at 70, $80,000 and you've got a double-wide trailer that's 30-year-old already. So that was a no-go.
Because I think you had a great idea of trying to, us to make space at the Health Department and they're willing to work with us. I know you've had conversation with them. So, I think that's probably very doable.
Yeah. If we just had an office and a space for storage, like for body bags, gloves, et cetera, et cetera, I'd be good with that.
Well, if you can get the Commissioner Whitfield, I mean, that's a central location. It's a good location, private parking in the back.
Oh, yeah. I'd be away from anybody.
You know, and if y'all could get together and look at that, see if it's doable with you guys and works good for the staff, the Health Department. I think it'd be a good location.
Well, and too, and me and Chairman Whitfield talked about that. But the main thing, at that point, I was looking for my truck.
Yes, sir.
So we got my truck. So now I can haul my records.
Cleared one hurdle, now you got another, right.
I feel like Johnny Cash getting one piece at a time. But hey, we're getting there. Thank you, gentlemen.
Our next resolution is R-006-24, a resolution of Walker County Board of Commissioners to designate and approve a defined geographical area for the fire district to operate by the Macklemore Volunteer Fire Department. Whereas fire protection is of vital importance to all citizens and visitors of the county. And whereas Macklemore Volunteer Fire Department Inc., MVFD, is a registered nonprofit corporation in good standing with the Georgia Secretary of State. And whereas the MVFD desires to provide fire protection to residents and visitors in the designated geographical area of Walker County. And hereafter, further described in Exhibit A, attached hereto area. And whereas MVFD will have a fire station and fire equipment located within the area. And MVFD will have trained personnel to provide fire protection. And whereas, it is the best interest of Walker County, its citizens and visitors, to designate and approve a defined geographical area for the fire district to be operated by MVFD. And whereas MVFD is in the process of applying for their certification of compliance with the Georgia Firefighter Standard and Training Council. And one of the requirements is to obtain certificate of compliance is to be attained a letter from the county governing authority approving MVFD to operate as a fire department within the area. Therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Walker County, Georgia, that the chairman of the board is authorized to execute a letter in the same, subsequently the same form as attached hereto as Exhibit A. And be further resolved that the area shall remain part of the Walker County Fire and Rescue District. And an annual special assessment shall be charged on all structures located within the area, except any public buildings and places of religious services. The Walker County Fire and Rescue District and the special assessments are defined in the county ordinance dated September 20th, 1994, recorded in Minute Book 34, page 451 through 460, and is amended as may be amended in the future. So, resolved and adopted the 25th day of January 2024. I'd like to ask Chief Hodge if he would like to come up and give some additional narrative to this. He's been heavily involved in this and working directly with them. And he can introduce his guest as well.
Good evening. Joining me is John Schmidt. He's the new fire chief at Macklemore. He comes from the state of Florida. He is well-qualified. We've been working together for several weeks now. And he's doing a good job. He's got a lot going on. But we've been trying to do everything we can. So I wanted to introduce him, in case you've got any questions or anything for him. Or I tried not to put him on the spot too bad. But so, Macklemore decided they wanted to start, have their own fire protection district for the hotel and resort and all the properties. So, a part of that and the reason for the resolution and then the letter is that the application process, the county has to give the authority for them to establish the fire department in that area. Now, the benefits, since the county doesn't have that particular area, the county's... county's in an unprotected area, it's over five miles from a fire station currently, so the benefits of when they start their fire department, it gets established, and it's gonna take some time, ISO's probably not gonna come in for six months to a year, so they can have actual data, but when that gets established, we, we're obviously, once they become a fire department in Georgia, then we will have automatic aid agreement with them. So what that, what that means for our citizens, our, our current rate, ISO rating's a three slash three Y, so if you're within that five miles and a thousand feet of a hydrant, you get the, the three, which is the, the best rating that you can get, the community rating. Even if, so right now, it's unprotected ten, there's no, they're paying the highest premium on their insurance because they're out, they're well out of that, that range. So, once the fire department gets established, and they get an ISO evaluation and get their, their number, then whatever, our automatic aid agreement, if you'll, if you'll picture traveling from their fire station, five miles, road miles into Walker County, based for our automatic aid, our county homeowners and business owners will then get whatever rating they have. So hypothetically, if it's a, if it's even a five, it's a whole lot better than unprotected. And of course, their goal is to eventually work and bring that as low as they can get it. It's gonna take some time, but, so, it's a, it's a, it's a win-win for, for Macklemore and for the, our county homeowners and business owners in that five-mile area right there. So, welcoming Chief Schmidt, and we've got, we've got a lot to do still, but we've been working hard, we're working with Dade County, because there is property in Dade County as well, so they're having to mirror what we're doing as well, so, but we've got to, once they get established, we can get the automatic aid, we can get them the mapping in the cab, get it set up to dispatch, we're working through all the, all the ins and outs of creating a fire department, so.
Any questions for Chief Hodge or Chief Schmidt?
Chief Schmidt, so I take it, you're the guy right now, right?
I'm the guy.
You're it, you're the guy. So, moving forward, I know you're looking at utilizing volunteers.
Yes.
So, I take that you come from an EMS background as well?
I come out of Florida, and we, we did both.
Okay.
Provided ALS, I've worked in a, in a community that had ALS engines with third-party transport, and then I recently retired out of Pasco County where we did ALS, we did ALS transport through the fire department.
Okay. I'm sure once the hotel gets up and going, you'll have need for EMS services up there, so that's good to know, thank you.
Would you like to share the type of firefighting equipment and all that you're putting in as far as trucks?
Sure. So, the, it's a private department, so the owner of the department who owns the company is called Solomon Safety, and they have another company that sells used fire equipment. So, where I came from, we always bought just brand-new, but when that equipment at night has exceeded its service, then Brindley Mountain Fire would likely buy it and then refurb it. So we have an engine, we have a tower ladder, a hundred-and-five tower ladder, and then we have a brush truck, and of course, we have a chief's car. So we're in the process of building out the, the engine right now, because we need the engine to be up and running, to be inspected by the state of Georgia. The ladder truck will come after some time, we gotta do some training, we gotta get the volunteers onboard, get them trained, get them trained how to drive the apparatus. The ladder truck is not an easy piece of apparatus to drive, so we need to spend some time training on that. So it's, it's there, we'll be starting working on it as quickly as we can, but that's not gonna be rolling out the door first day.
Question, Chief, so owners, you're using volunteers, will we, will you train them there, on-site there, or are we assisting? I know we train full-time, I'm just curious, is, are we gonna, how's that gonna work as far as training your volunteer personnel?
So, we're gonna hopefully work collaboratively. I came out of Pinellas County, and I was a training chief down in Pinellas County, and if you know anything about Florida and Pinellas County, there's eighteen departments within the county, so we collaboratively trained all the time, so that's very, I'm very comfortable with that. I've met with Chief Stevenson, and we already built out a kind of a plan that at least quarterly get together and train together. Chief Hodge and his staff have been awesome in providing support to me and to our, our project here, and it's been really, really great, and, you know, kinda makes you feel good that, that we're gonna work, be able to work collaboratively through this process.
And so there'll be several MOUs involved, there, there's gonna be an MOU with, for us to dispatch for, and there's gonna be an MOU where they'll initially at least, we're gonna allow them to share our training center, if they need the tower, if they need anything like that. So he'll, they'll get, when they get their ISO ready, and they'll get some credit for having that partnership with the MOU for our training facility, so it's, it's, again, a work in progress, but it's, it's, it's coming together, it's having to come together quickly.
Sounds like y'all got, got.
In short, by the short hairs, as they say.
And I want to thank Joe and our attorney, David Gottlieb, because it was, and Chairman Whitfield, because it was put together, this, this was put together pretty quick at the end. I mean, we got, not that it was late notice, but it was, they got, they got Chief Schmidt up here, and it was all in his lap, so, you know, we had to, we had to hurry up and try to get it done, because they're, they're on a timeline, so we're trying to get them there.
Any other questions?
No.
I'm sorry, we can't take any questions, thank you though, but you can talk to them afterwards.
Okay.
Thank you, or any of us, thank you. All right, anybody else on the board? Okay, all right, do we have a motion to approve this resolution?
No, they're approved.
We have a motion by Commissioner Stoltz, do we have a second?
Second.
A second by Commissioner Blakemore, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Okay, so, next item we have, we do have some purchase orders, so we have purchase order two thousand twenty-four dash six oh three for thirty-nine thousand, four hundred eighty-seven dollars and fifty cents for some fire rescue turnout, so Chief Hodge, let's speak on that one.
This is, the, the next three items are all a part of our equipment replacement program, and just as a reminder for those that don't know, we've, we've got this in the budget, so it's reoccurring cost, so we can, in our capital, so we can basically have, when, when equipment expires, we can bring, when it falls off, we can bring something on annually, instead of being hit with, you know, seven, eight-hundred-thousand-dollar purchase at one time. And it's, it's, it takes years to build this, the, where it builds out like it's supposed to, but I call it a maintenance drip, but it's, it's, this gear, it's thirteen sets, we generally are gonna purchase roughly ten to thirteen sets a, a year. We have twelve sets that are going out, the lifespan of turnout gear is ten years, if it, if it's not, if it's in good shape, it expires in ten years, and we've got the twelve sets that are going out in July, I think, of this year. So, this thirteen sets is, it is actually replacing gear that's coming off. Sometimes when we purchase it in years past, or in the coming years, it'll be when gear's damaged, it has to be replaced. We're trying to keep firefighters, because of the exposure to can, cancer, you know, cancer-causing agents in the gear, and we're trying to keep them in two sets. So we've, we've spent the money on washers and extractors, and we're taking better care of the gear. We've got most everybody, all the firefighters, in two sets, and this is just where it's coming on and going off, coming on, going off. So it's, it's something that we're, that we do every year.
Questions?
So, you mentioned these were in your budget, so these three purchase orders are coming out of your budget?
I believe, I believe this is coming out of, out of.
This is our ARPA fund.
Out of ARPA.
He typically has it in his budget.
Yes.
This year, we had to take it out of the ARPA funds.
Okay.
Any other questions? Hearing none, do we have a, a motion to approve purchase order six oh three in the amount of thirty-nine thousand, four hundred eighty-seven dollars and fifty cents?
Motion to approve.
A motion by Commissioner Blakemore, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Askew, any further discussion?
Yes, sir.
Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, purchase order's approved. Okay, our next purchase order is six oh four for some additional equipment, so Chief Hodge?
So this is for the SVA. The self-contained breathing apparatus, the air packs that we wear to, to, during structural firefighting. We're purchasing six and then eighteen cylinders, the, again, it's part of a replacement program, we have, we have the need for a hundred-and-forty harnesses, air packs that, in the, in the county. Some of that's requirements of ISO, and then obviously, training, command staff, and with that, the standard is two cylinders per harness, so that, that's around two-hundred-and-eighty cylinders, and again, we have cylinders coming off, that's why we're, if you, last year, I think we got, we bought eight air packs and sixteen bottles, so it changes, we, we monitor what's going on with what's, what's, what's expiring, and those bottles, those are fifteen years. So, again, as we progress throughout this replacement program, it starts leveling out, where cylinders roll off, cylinders roll on. Harnesses do not expire, but they fail, and we have a lot of them that are twelve, fifteen years old, and they take, they get a lot of wear and tear, so we do have what I would call a cache of out-of-service harnesses that we part out, but this is the, this is the need, this is a, a good average need that we're gonna get, that we're asked for every year.
Any other questions? Hearing none, do we have a motion to approve purchase order six oh four in the amount of sixty-one thousand, eight hundred eighty-seven dollars and sixty-six cents for additional equipment for the fire department?
Make the motion approve.
A motion by Commissioner Askew, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Blakemore, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, purchase order's approved. All right, the next purchase order is six oh five, Chief Hodge?
This is for extrication equipment, it's, it's Hurst hydraulics, they're battery-powered, this is our third set we've purchased, it's the cutters, spreaders, ram, and then it comes with spare batteries, backup batteries, these are excellent tools. We have ten extrication sets in the county, eight of which are twenty-two years old, so we're, we're seeing failure in, in some of those, not, not every year, but we do, we're down to where we don't have any, the spares are what we have at a few volunteer stations. So if something happens to one of our frontline career stations, we're having to take them off of one of those. So this will be replacing one of the sets that we currently have in service at a career station, and creating a spare that, that we can use. And if, and to give an example of how the capital, where, where it's dynamic, is we didn't, we didn't buy a set last year, we had to use funding for, for other equipment that we needed that took priority over this, so we're back to requesting this this year.
Any questions?
Yes, sir.
Hearing none, we have a motion to approve purchase order six oh five for the fire department, the amount of forty thousand, three hundred nineteen dollars and sixty-four cents.
So moved.
A motion by Commissioner Hart, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Stoltz, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the purchase order's approved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item on our agenda was an update on the Hinkle, this was the item that, I did get out on the table kinda late, but this is a summary of the Hinkle Fire Station, and also included some pictures, because a lot of people in the community may not be familiar with this location. This location, I think, was built about ten years ago, and the outside was completed for the most part, but the interior design of the living spaces and, and all was nought, so you can see it's just pretty much an open shell, but the, some of the stubouts for the plumbing and electrical and all was put in, and there's one picture there in the lower right that does show the stubout for the sprinkler system. So I did meet with the architect, Ross Andrews, up there this week, and did a review of the scope of the work, to make sure things were as he had it in his drawings, there are a few things that he saw that were different from the original design, so he's gonna go back and make sure there was changes that were presented in that scope of work, and that there were structural drawing changes, and also is gonna get back with us on that. This is just a, an estimated projected timeline, once we get the second-story drawings back, you know, we'd be able to revise and update these timelines overall, but the goal is is try to get this project completed this year. So we'll provide that to y'all tonight.
Good question. So, you all, you, you, you met with, because I'd asked you, I did ask the last meeting for an update, and I appreciate this, this is a good timeline. So you met with the architect. Chief, were you, were you involved in this meeting, or, or the layout in this facility at all, or, I wanna make sure that we're getting it where we need it.
The, I haven't had any communication as of late, but I was involved in the, starting the layout, back when we met with, when I met with Ross Andrews, who's the architect.
And that's the layout he's working from, is what him and Farrell met with him on.
Thank you, Chief.
Yeah, so, yeah, he's working off of that.
So is the plan to put a second story in this, inside that existing structure?
Yes.
So we, you know, it's. It wouldn't be a stand, it wouldn't be tied to that structure?
No, it'd kinda be like, you, you've been, just to inject, but you know, like, the road department, to what we built as a morgue, back, well, that's, you know, it's offices downstairs, and then a floor system, it's, we use the floor system, only he's got six thousand square foot of storage up there, so I think that's kinda what they're doing is gonna be mostly, you know, have a second story, but it'll be freestanding, yeah, Brian, it's kinda like just a cubicle, big, big cubicle inside a shell.
And that'll be the quarters for.
Yes, living space, so the outside would not change at all, the outside's pretty well-completed, so they would take the existing design of the first floor and encompass structurally what would need to be put in place to have a second story. Yeah, for the load and for the plumbing, those type of services, and so, you know, based off of our timeline, then, you know, there'll be a review process, we hope to have a community meeting, have time for staff and commissioners to review that, and, you know, give approval for the bidding process and all, so I feel like we've got a pretty good timeline here, it's somewhat aggressive, not, it's not knowing all the particulars, if we'll get all the information back, and what the board's pleasure will be, and, you know, appropriating whatever funds we need to take to, to make that happen.
Okay, thanks.
Sure. Okay, our public meeting is seven-thirty-nine, so we don't have any problem with that goal, so at this time, we have our public hearings for Billy West requests a variance for less than five acres in an eight-one agricultural zone, for property located at twenty-one-sixty-four Corinth Road, Lefet, Georgia, three oh seven two eight, tax map and parcel number zero dash four nine nine dash zero one eight. Is anyone here tonight that would like to speak in opposition of this? If you want to speak in opposition. Okay, hearing none, anyone that wants to speak in favor of this, or if the applicant would like to speak? Okay, yes, sir, come on up, please. And just, when you come up, please state your name for the record, if you would.
Billy West.
Okay, Mr. West?
We was wanting to try to put a second trailer out there for my sister-in-law, they live in Florida, Alabama, and they live two hundred miles away, but me and my wife trying to take care of our ninety-five-year-old mama, and it's hard to, or my wife didn't do everything, she's not in good health, and I'm not neither, but we're putting out most two hundred and seventy miles, and we call our car, just going back and forth to our house, cooking for her, we clean her house, we wash her clothes, I mean, we do everything for her, but if we could get her up on her property, we're leaving her with my wife's sister, between both of them, they could handle it a lot better than what one person can, you know what I mean? If we're, we're gonna take care of her, you know, but it would've been a lot better if, if y'all would, okay, put another trailer out there, if y'all would, I appreciate it, you know, thank y'all, but we just, I don't know what to say, I just know that we gotta do something to help her, and, and help my wife too, she's, she's gotta have things done, and I do too, but another person there, that way, she won't have to be doing everything, so we gotta cook her breakfast, put supper, we take it to her, I mean, we go, well, she goes to cook her breakfast, and then if she wants to come to the house, and she feels like it, we go get her, take her back, you know, take her to our house, she ate, we take her back home, we come back home, that's three times a day, you know, and it's about fifteen miles round trip, I mean, you know, and you figure fifteen miles, that'd be forty-five miles a day, top seven, you know, you pretty well figure that out, but it don't matter how many miles we put in a car, I'll give her a thousand miles a week, I just, you know, we're gonna take care of her, we just wanna know if we can put another trailer out there. If we do, we appreciate it, and we thank y'all.
Does any board member have any questions for Mr. West?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you for speaking, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Anyone else that would like to speak in regards to this hearing on this action item? Okay, hearing none, we'll go to the next one on our agenda. We have a request for a variance for more than six on a private drive for property located at one oh two, is that Posen Lane, Chickamauga, Georgia, three oh seven two eight, tax map and parcel number zero dash one one zero dash zero zero five. Anyone here that wants to speak in opposition of this? Any opposition on this next one? Okay, anyone that would like to speak in favor of this, or if the applicant would like to come and speak? You don't have to, but. to come and speak, you don't have to, but you're welcome to. Anyone wants to speak? Okay, hearing none, we'll go to our next one. John Watson requests a variance for less than five acres in an A-one agricultural zone for property located at twenty-four five ninety-five, Highway one ninety-three, Lafette, Georgia, three oh seven two eight, tax map and parcel number zero dash four seven two dash zero zero three. Anyone that wants to speak in opposition? Any opposition to this request? Yes, sir, please state your name.
Jamie Holsey. Uh, so this was supposed to go from half, five something acres to how much?
We're cutting off one point six-two acres off a hundred-and-fourteen acre tract.
Right, but currently, the house itself is, has a deed or a property line-
It is, but that house is being sold with the one fourteen.
Right, a request in that one fourteen. Hundred, one point one four acre.
It's a hundred fifteen plus acres, you have fourteen, one fourteen point zero five.
Yeah. Well, again, this is A-one, and, and the reason, uh, having it less than five acres in a A-one is, is what? Because just somebody's wanting to buy it with one or two acres and not five, right?
Well, if you look at the minutes, and I, and I was at the meeting, and I think Billy Teague will speak on this in a minute, but, Mr. Watson's wanting to sell his farm, the guy that wants to buy the farm does not want to purchase the, the other house with the farm.
Sure.
So, Mr. Watson is gonna keep the smaller house at one point six-two acres in order to sell the rest of the farm.
Okay, but would that be a zoning change for that house?
It would not be, our county attorneys looked at this, would you like to touch on this, David?
It would not be a zoning change, uh, that house has been there for, uh, longer than the zoning's been in effect, also, uh, residential is permitted inside, uh, inside A-one zoning.
So this house has never been designated property lines, or an acreage, just for the small house?
Has it had designated property lines?
Like, was it previously or currently sitting on?
I, I remember looking at the, uh, at a tax map, and, uh, it was designated on the tax map, now, whether or not a particular survey was prepared, uh, I, I couldn't tell you, I don't know if, if, Brian, if that came up, I was not present at the planning commission meeting.
Well, I think the lines will be drawn if this is approved or disapproved, uh, but to answer your question, th- this small house was part of the original home place, Mr. Watson built the other house in the middle of it, which the purchaser wants to buy with, and then, uh-
Sure.
He'll keep the smaller-
It's just a different situation than other ones that have come up on, you know, hardship's one, this is one in A-one, you know, it requires five acres to build a house, you know, 'cause so having an existing house, I guess that hadn't come up much, so, well, do we sell this house out with two acres or five acres, but it does have to be some variance-
And, and one of the reasons that was mentioned that it was not divided into five acres is because it would eat into the barn space that the current farm actually has.
Oh, really? Let's tear it down. Anyway, just asking about, I, I just have more caution of setting more and more precedents, because that will turn eventually into you won't have control of anything, so, you know, this is standalone enough to not justify somebody, like us, okay, we want our house sitting on our property with only two acres, and then have the rest, that, you know, kinda, again, it's a backdoor into having less than five acres in A-one zoning, so, anyway, just caution, if you don't think it sets more precedence.
Just, just to provide a little bit further explanation for you, it's my understanding that this reference to a barn, there actually are two barns, and that there is a space between the two barns, and it's, uh, it's an integral part of the cattle farming process on this particular parcel, and I'm not a cattle farmer, believe me, but I, it's my understanding, uh-
They either both have tails.
That it's, that it's not, you know, it's not just like, oh, a barn with no particular meaning, it and the other, uh, barn and the space in between is, uh, required for the operation of the cattle farm, now, I mean-
Okay, and that's fine, thanks for the details, but it's, it's a common sense solution, but it's not setting a precedence of other things that could come, so, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else that wants to speak in opposition? Anybody else wants to speak in opposition? Hearing none, would the applicant like to come up, or someone representing the applicant? Please state your name for the record.
Yes, Billy Teague, good to see you, gentlemen, this is Larissa Dever, she's gonna give you a plat, uh, we're here representing John A. Watson, Jr., and George Watson, of the Watson Farm, been in their family since nineteen seventeen. Uh, John and George are early eighties and very rapidly declining health, they have no family members in the area, uh, so they are, been trying to sell the farm for quite a while, wanted to sell it all together, even with the older home on the front, we have not found a buyer that can put all that together, it's a pretty large number. Uh, so John's gonna keep the house in one point six-two acres, it is the people who are purchasing the rest of the farm, it is their desire within a couple of years to buy that also, okay? Uh, we are also adding back the five acres that was cut out in oh six for John to build a house. Any questions?
So you're net, you're actually adding back-
We're adding, we're adding to it, and, and trust me, this, selling this farm, if you've ever seen the farm, it's a beautiful farm, this is not his desire, but he, they need to be with family, and they have no family in the area to help take care of it. Any questions?
Any questions from the board?
Nope, we'll get it.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you for providing this. Okay, anyone else that'd like to speak on this one? Okay, hearing none, we'll move to the next one. Will and Amy Garrett request a variance for less than five acres in an A-one agricultural zone for property located at two sixteen Brownhaven Lane, Rising Fawn, Georgia, three oh seven three eight, tax map and parcel number zero two two three, excuse me, zero two three seven dash zero three five. Anyone that wants to speak in opposition?
Was that the one that was-
They withdrew their request, I believe.
Okay.
Yeah, that one was withdrawn.
That one was been withdrawn?
They withdrew it.
Okay, I'm sorry, thank you for that. Okay, the next one we have is, uh, Jennifer Tessa requests a conditional use variance for property located at forty Blessway, Rock Springs, Georgia, three oh seven three nine, tax map and parcel number zero dash three three seven dash zero zero nine B. Anyone wants to speak in opposition of this one? Yes, please, come up.
Not necessarily opposition, but I guess a question.
Okay, sure, come on up. Please state your name, please.
Melissa Holsey, I, I just have, I, I read this one, and it kind of, to me, opened up a broader question about Airbnb and VRBO in general in Walker County, and I think this may be a great, um, place for us to kind of revisit that conversation on, you know, where do they belong, what belongs, I think there's still some, you know, like, are they allowed in A-one, and is that something that, you know, needs to be considered as we promote tourism, um, in A-one areas, uh, you know, things like, like on this, campers, or, or RVs, or Airstreams, or whatever, you know, is that something that we want in the county, and if so, how do we define that? So I'm not necessarily speaking pro or con against this one, and in full disclosure, um, you know, I do have a, a physical house that is a VRBO, um, it's on a hundred acres, so it doesn't have any zoning issues, but I, I think I would like to request to the board that we just have a conversation and maybe look at the entirety of Airbnb and VRBO, and how that fits in Walker County, and how we want that to look moving forward, because, you know, what wasn't an issue maybe five or ten years ago, you know, now this, you know, this is, this is the way people travel now, and I think that we need to kinda catch up, so, um, could I have y'all's commitment to maybe begin, and, and I'd like to give John personally credit, um, he's a wonderful guy at planning and zoning, and I think he's beginning this conversation as well, but, um, if we could maybe move that to the top of the food chain, that'd be greatly appreciated, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak on this one? Yes, ma'am, please state your name.
Janelle Davis, um, I'm not really sure what all the information I need to give, because we were under the impression that the Tessas were gonna ask to table this until a later time, until they got more information, so should I proceed with my-
That's correct, we, we would like to continue, we learned just last week that, um, our neighbors had some concerns, we took the time to meet with them on this past weekend, they all came over, and we had a good chance to have some good dialogue, and we feel like we can, um, work for a mutual solution, so we'd love to ask if this can be, um, continued to the next meeting, I do have a couple items to share since I'm on the agenda anyway, but, um-
Okay, we'll let you share those in a minute.
Okay, but thank you, yeah, but, but I would like if, if that's a possibility for us to continue, I agree.
Sure, yeah, we'll let you continue, go ahead.
Okay, then I'll go ahead and express why we were, um, in opposition to this, um, we didn't know really any of the plans, we just got the letter from the Board of Commissions requesting for them to have RVs and campers to rent or live in, that did not tell us how many, or where at on the property, which, um, there would have been more people from our subdivision here, but we thought since there was a, maybe a continuance, they, they didn't count, but this whole row was our subdivision. Um, my property directly touches their property, we are in the very back of the subdivision, um, and since the resort has opened, um, there's a walking trail right by our house, so we've had people walking through our subdivision, um, which is private, we've had people messing with our dogs in our yard, um, walking through, um, so that was one of the first things, of people walking through, so we, um, when we kinda talked to the subdivision, there are three campers already at the resort, which, we don't ever hear them or see them, they don't come in and out, they're stationary, so those campers don't bother the subdivision, but when we went and looked in where they were wanting to put the other four, which even, they said there's not really enough room for four, but maybe more like two or three, it's directly behind some of our houses, so our concern is, we don't wanna hear campers coming in and out all the time, um, they said there would be no generators, um, there was a generator in a, in a barn, or a storage building, that we could hear constantly, um, so, at the last meeting, they were talking about if there were campers back there, maybe having a fence put in with some noise barrier, uh, natural vegetation, um, so I think some of our other concerns is, um, our property values, what's gonna happen to our property values if there's RV, an RV park now next door, and, I mean, we paid a lot of money for our houses, and we paid that for quiet and safe neighborhood, now we have people that are coming in week to, you know, renting week to week, which there's no regulations on how many weeks they rent, once they're there, um, so we don't know who's walking through our subdivision and walking beside all our properties now. Um, another issue was, they're wanting to put the, the new campers on an existing septic tank, which is thirty years old, hasn't been used in twenty years, um, so when I called the environmental department, they said that technically each camper should have its own tank, and that they would definitely need to do a system evaluation on that, um, because in our subdivision, we have all had septic issues, every single one of us have had to replace our septic system, or tank, or lines, or something, so where that tank is now, it all flows back towards our property, so, that's a big concern. Um, I've also talked to, um, the GDOT about the traffic issues, I'm sure y'all know on ninety-five right there in that curve, there are wrecks constantly, um, they've had three wrecks in their yard-
And three years.
And, and there's wrecks there all the time, um, so, GDOT looked at the property and explained that there's regulations that should be put in place if you're gonna have RVs coming in and out, and a single car driveway is really not up to their standards, um, and it's a fifty-five mile per hour in a passing zone, um, so those were some of our main concerns, um, of why we did not want the campers coming back and forth, and put on a septic system that we're really not sure still works. Thank you.
Thank you for coming. Okay, would the applicant like to come up and speak, I think maybe y'all can help clear up some of your intentions? Please state your name for us.
Hi, I'm Jennifer Tessa, and my husband Donald Tessa, um, so, like we said, last week, we, um, we learned about some of these concerns that our neighbors had, and we just first off wanna say that, um, you know, we lived on Hankins Road, our kids go to Rock Spring Elementary, our goal is to improve this community, and it always has been, um, we didn't come from money in our family, if you wanna look at where the money came for Rock Spring Resort, um, it came from a lot of years and saving up for retirement, um, my brother, who's a police officer, he invested his retirement funds, my mother, who is a schoolteacher, invested her retirement funds, my husband, who's done military for over thirty years, invested what he saved, and I invested what I've earned as well, and so, we came in trying to do a good thing for the community, and we just, we just wanted to make sure everybody knows that, um, when we first, um, we first came in, we saw that there was this big building, and we realized, okay, there a lot can be done, it's twenty-four thousand square feet, right, that's a, that's a big building, and it's on ten acres, we thought, okay, we could take half of these apartment, or we, we could take this, and we could put out of these about twenty apartments and an event center, and we went ahead, submitted all the stuff, worked with the county, they were really clear on all the safety regulations, that we would need to put in a sprinkler system, that we would need to put in additional access for emergency vehicles, we need to put in an alarm system, we would need to make sure the extinguishers, the egress lighting, all that stuff was up to date, um, and we worked through each of those items with Scott Forrest, um, they were real helpful with that, and, um, then we, we got through those hoops, and we went ahead and started filling the places, and our idea was that we would have half of our apartments as, um, controlled, controlled rent-type apartments, but not section E, it would just be reasonable rent for folks who were in different situations, for example, the deaf tenants who had been there for years, we didn't wanna kick them all out, we thought that would just be a lousy thing to do, so we went ahead and gave them three-year leases under controlled rent. We, um, then went ahead and, um, we looked at how do we, how do we make sure we offset this, right, 'cause you can't just give everybody controlled rent and do all these improvements to the building that you needed to do, so, we went ahead and started doing Airbnb and Verbo to offset that expense, therefore, our tourists were actually paying that additional rate, and they were paying more, and people in our county were able, deaf tenants were able to afford housing at a lower rate, and the taxpayers in our county didn't have to pay for that. We thought that was good for our county, and you know what, the county thought it was good too, we were working, we were going along, then we came to a point where there's a lot of rain, and we thought, gosh, you know, we started to see that the ground was a little bit soggy over on the, the, where our dog park was, and we thought, you know, we need to, um, see if we need to do a septic, we need to expand the septic things and things like that, so we went ahead and contacted Environmental Health, said, hey, can we do a soil sample, and they go, who the heck are you? And we go, well, we're Rock Spring Resort, we've got a whole bunch of Airbnbs, I mean, we've been operating this, and they said, well, we didn't know, we had put in everything through the county, submitted all the stuff to the best of our knowledge, we'd been paying taxes to the county, all of your, you know, Verbo and Airbnb, they remit all the taxes for you, so we had, um, I mean, at this point, we brought in like six hundred customers between Airbnb and Verbo over the last couple of years, that have all been tax-free customers to this county, and, um, so, apparently, there's a lot of issues in the state, ones that we maybe don't affect here, maybe they do, they don't affect Rock Spring Resort, but the state said you can't have long-term and short-term housing under the same roof, and this is a big building with twenty-four thousand square feet, so, it's one roof. Um, so, we were given a choice, we were given a choice that we could either do long-term or short-term housing, and, um, so we started, we took all of our people on long-term, we converted them into week-to-week, and we, since that time, have done only short-term rentals, um, and so, that's where we are. And so that's where we are, is that we had to do short-term rentals. To do that, we had to jump through quite a few hoops. For example, we were told that all of our apartments needed to be done construction-wise. So at that point, we renovated 17 of the 20 apartments. We still had three left and they were three big ones. We were given 30 days to be compliant with this. So in 30 days, we renovated three apartments. You can imagine what that costs when you're a small family who's renovating three apartments that fast. We were also told that we had to furnish it to the same standards as the rest and that our people could not have their own furniture. We therefore rented a storage facility out back, the one that they're talking about with the generator. We temperature controlled it with the generator and we let all of our people who had their own furniture move it back there to that storage shed so that they didn't have to figure out what to do with their furniture all at once. We then held a big garage sale. I think people probably saw us at that garage sale and came and bought a lot of that furniture. A lot of it doesn't even exist anymore. Some of it's still there. And we went ahead and furnished each of these places. This was a large expenditure and it wasn't one that we'd originally planned on. We'd originally planned on doing this half and half. We had it all budgeted, we had it all planned. And at the end of the day, we, we all got caught in a situation that nobody had really understood. And I still, to this day, think that the decision that the state is making is not the right direction. If you go down to Texas, quite honestly, you go to Houston, we go to my husband's cancer treatments at MD Anderson, and you know what? There, they've got all kinds of apartments that are long-term and short-term, all in that same building. And so to this day, I think the state still didn't make the right decision by what's good for our county and what's good for our taxpayers and what's good for us. But it's what we're left with. So to get to this point, I appreciate you letting me go down this history trail, but there were three RV lots there in the front. And the deaf church who owned the property before us had conditional use permits for those three RV lots. They were specific to them. When we had bought that, we didn't understand that those were specific to them. They hadn't used them in a while, but we went ahead and just said, okay, let's use these RV lots. One of them, immediately the deaf church said, hey, this deaf family needs a spot. And they moved in. And I do understand that we can't have permanent people in a camper. That situation, they've already been alerted and they're working on that and where they could go from there. The other two that were in the front, we went ahead and we had our own RVs that we'd acquired for a couple of different reasons. And we went ahead and did rent-to-own agreements with people who were in the building. And some of them, like one of them, he, his name's Eric Helms, he runs this Chrysler dealership right here in Lafayette. And he lives out of town, has a home out of town. His wife is eventually going to move here, so he stays in the RV when he's here and then he goes back home to his home there out of state. We've got another guy who has been there for a long time. He just tried it out. He's already decided he doesn't want to stay there. He, after, after doing just a couple of days during those cold temperatures and realizing that an RV is not quite like a home, he didn't want to do that. So where we're at right now is we've got these three RV lots in the front that exist. We have taken the time and invested the money to back them up and make sure that we had already put a barrier. We've got some pictures that you've got in your packet that shows how we backed it up. We put a picnic table, we put swings, like we've done our best to make it aesthetically pleasing. We also talked to environmental health and made sure that we followed their requirements for RVs in the future. So what we had to do with that was we had to put a cement pad underneath our dumpster. We also had to widen the berth of the access path so that emergency vehicles could go straight up to those RVs. Well, now we're in a situation where my unders, we just want to use these three, these three lots. And I want to take a whole bunch of the issues off the table that our neighbors were concerned about. They were really concerned about our development in the back. We're just going to go ahead and take that off the table. I'm going to go ahead and give you some of the stuff we handed out. A lot of it doesn't apply, so I'm not handing you that. But what I am going to hand you is our values and our vision. And our vision is to protect, or to positively impact the community. And this became pretty clear that this was not going to positively impact the community. So we've just taken that off the table. So in terms of any ones in the back, we can not have any of those conversations, which saves everybody a lot of time and effort. The ones in the front, we'd like to continue and we'd like to work with our neighbors, but we do hope to do something and we need advice here. And here's why, because there's two choices. One is that these are short-term rentals, which is my understanding of what, what the county wants. It would fall in line with the rest of our short-term rentals. Because of the concerns that were brought up at the meeting last week, I've already gotten a call from Jason Environmental Health and they don't feel comfortable expanding our permit for tourism based on the phone calls that have happened. Therefore, even if this gets approved here, our understanding is we still wouldn't be able to get the tourism permit to do short-term rentals there. We're open, whether we do long-term or do short-term. We like short-term better because frankly, you can make more money at it and we've invested an awful lot of money in this property. We are all in and this would allow us to get to a better financial position. We also want to do what's best for the community. What we hope won't happen is that we won't be told, look, you can't use this for long-term, you can't use this for short-term, you just can't use these three RV lots that were already conditionally approved in the past with the deaf church. So we're just looking for solutions and I know this one is complicated. This one's, I found it to be pretty complicated too and hard to navigate. So we'd really love suggestions that maybe as we sit down and talk through these issues, we can come up with a solution.
Well, I just, I did want to ask a couple of questions. So now, like I said, this, the whole dynamics have kind of changed, I guess, because I was trying to do some homework, catching up from the planning commission meeting to see where we were on some of that. So originally, your request was a variance request, right? And you were asking for four more? Is that, is that right?
I've taken the four off and so there, I'm just asking for the three that are already there. And it's still a variance request because right now, the conditional, well, y'all can probably tell better than I can, but my understanding is that's tied to the prior owners, the conditional permitting.
Conditional use.
The conditional use permit is tied to them right now. But we have been there since August of 2021 and we have been, we have had the RVs in place since that time, or pretty close to it.
And I did want to ask you, you mentioned about the deceptive, deceptive system and the ground was a little soft and you got, of course, like I said, everything wet right now. So does that system, is that what these three RV lots are on, or is that on the actual building itself?
So there's actually, there's actually three septic tanks on this land. There's two, there's one on each side. One is the dog park side, which is the west side, and that one's 1,000 gallons. That's the one that like, the dog park side, which is the same side as our neighbors, that the ground gets saturated. So that is the side that what we did when we started noticing that like, it wasn't horrible, it was just like, okay, there were like puddles in certain places and we're like, we may have an issue if it rains much more. So we went ahead and contacted environmental health and said, hey, let's do soil samples, let's get this permit. So they've done a recommendation that like, we're allowed to go out and add additional field lines and where we would do that, but it's not a requirement at this point. We're kind of waiting to see with rainy season, do we need to spend this 10 grand or not? That's a lot of money. What we're talking about here though, is on the east side and it's over by that big field. And over there is on a different septic tank. Right now, the building is split in the middle. So essentially, you've got half the building on one septic and half on the other septic. We've never had any issues on, on the east side and these RVs have been tied into it for the two years we've been there, as well as that building being, being full.
And then the third septic system is located in the back where there used to be a double wide. It was not safe, so we immediately ripped that down.
Yeah, so Miss Testa, so the three lots you're referring to, so will those have electric hookups for the, for the RVs?
They do. They have electric, they have full septic that's tied into that tank. And they have high-speed Wi-Fi, just like the rest of our property. We went ahead and ran a fiber line so that everybody would have the power they needed for the kind of communication we do.
And they also have water, sir.
So there would really be no reason for them to run a generator?
No, sir. There's no generators being run.
Yeah, that was just a miscommunication that I think we've worked out now.
So that was just temporary on running the generator?
It was. We had like 30 days to figure out, what the heck do we do? We were like, all right, well, let's just have them put the furniture in a storage shed for right now. And they go, yeah, well, it's the middle of summer, John. It's like, our stuff will be ruined in no time, it'll mold. And we're like, all right, we'll run a generator for now. That'll take care of the problem. It's just a temporary item to try to meet the requirements that we didn't know we were going to be facing.
But there's no one living in...
It's a storage shed.
Have they lived in the storage shed? And there's no way in God's green earth that the, the septic can flow over into the subdivision?
Well, we don't have anything hooked into that septic. There's no risk there, there's no risk there at all.
None.
Any other questions?
So, so one of the things talked about in the meeting was a, was a privacy fence. That was a pretty vague statement and you guys were going to discuss that, still working on that, I guess.
That, that's what we'd really like to discuss before. I mean, I think from us talking to our neighbors, they're okay with just discussing a privacy fence perhaps in front. I don't even know if we can do that. I mean, this, this came up when we all talked on Sunday. The problem is they, there's power lines running there. I don't even know where we can put a fence. Apparently, they take down the greenery. There's already a pretty good, like 25-foot vegetation, so...
There's a natural barrier there right now, as well as as you proceed back towards the back of the property, you have a burn that, that comes up and then eventually slopes back down. The young lady that was speaking earlier, her yard is in the far back. You can't stop somebody, you can't stop anybody from walking, you know, seeing a dog and walking up, but there is a physical barrier. You have, you have the wood line there and then they have a fence. How can you stop somebody from physically walking up to a fence? It's, it's unrealistic to put the southern wall across the side of my property, running the whole entire span. Had the neighbors had come up to us originally, when and if somebody was walking through the yard, just asked us, hey, we've got, we've seen a couple of people, how many people walking through their, their...
We would have put it to bed.
Through their yard, through their subdivision, which is a county road, it's not a private road. I myself drove through there. My, I myself drove through there looking for my dog and they put that into question. Oh, he's driving real slow. Because it is a subdivision. So I drive real slow, looking, looking for my dog. And I stopped and asked, of course.
Okay, so tonight, are y'all wanting to have us table this so y'all can continue to work out the details and come back in two weeks?
That's what we, that's what we'd like to do, but we'd also love if, if any of you have suggestions on, on what we do. It does us no good to come through here and have this variance declared for it to be a, for us to have short-term rentals of three lots there in front and take the people that we have now and go, all right, goodbye, let's put in short-term rentals. And then tourism doesn't, the health department doesn't allow us to expand our tourism permit. Like, okay, that just put us into a worse situation than we're in right now. So we do need a solution and we would be very open if anybody's got suggestions.
Well, I think one of the best things to do, and you mentioned John Persley, who's a great asset to our county, is for y'all to kind of get with John next week and get with the neighbors next week. And if you can bring in here a drawing, where here's the building, here's where the lot's going to go, here's what kind of fence we're going to build or what kind of fence we're not going to build. Because John can work through all the systems, he worked through the, the septic tank folks or the environmental health, I'm sorry. And then he can communicate with us and see because, you know, he knows the ins and outs of this problem better than I do for sure.
John's been out there several times and has looked at all of this with us and he, he feels that this fits into what the rest of our building is, is doing with, with the short-term rentals. But I mean, I guess to your point, like, I realize, I mean, this is great that this county is open to Airbnbs and Verbos. That was one of the major reasons we invested into, into this particular county. But I know that this is opening up things that haven't been dealt with before and we are one of the first examples of where different things are kind of running into each other. So we would love to work some more with John and with our neighbors and that's what we like to have the chance to, to do.
I think Brian's recommendation is very good, but like I said, I think y'all, I hear concerns and I think that part of the concerns, that you've taken some of that off the table as far as the expansion behind. So I, I believe that I would be in line with Mr. Hart and I won't, and I will tell you, it is in my district and I want to, I want to come out Monday or Tuesday, what's good for you guys? If you let me know which day's better, I want to come out and look at it for myself, just kind of lay eyes on it too. But I think if y'all had time to talk with the neighbors a little more, discuss, because basically, you know, you had a, a conditional use prior, there was a conditional, it was a, a conditional use variance, was that what was allowed the, for the use of the three tanks to start with? And that's been, and that lived with the owner of the property. So I don't know that you wouldn't be, like I said, that we couldn't, those have been used and have been in place, but I really believe that y'all need to kind of get, just talk it out a little bit more and that way everybody's on the same page. I don't think it's a bad idea at all. And the short-term, I think it's probably more suited there because I think when you get into the long-term, then it's a residence, then you're going to be looking at an Acel, Dcel lane from the DOT and things like that, because like you said, of the safety issues. So, you know, let's, let's, let's do, I'm going to make a motion that we table it till the next meeting, give you guys time to get with the, with the citizens of concern. Let's put together a little packaging and I'll see if we can't, if we can work that out. Is two weeks enough?
Well, I think what we need to do since it's been advertised enough, we can table it for two weeks and then if we need to, if they need more time after that, then we would, we just continue.
As long as everybody can get together and then we can actually make a, you know, look at it and make a decision.
What clarification? What is the county's current position on RVs and campers being used as short-term rental? Is there, is there a specific policy currently on, I mean, I didn't find one.
No, I was going to say, Ms. Wilson, not that I'm aware of, and I could be very wrong, so I don't want to speak out of time, but I don't think that there isn't. That is something that you brought up a good point earlier, that we've got to, we need to get on the front end of. As far as I understand is the campers, you can't live in a camper. That's, that's not allowed unless it's in a park, set up in a, a proper park. We do allow for people who are building homes to live while they're building and that's something that's been allowed for quite some time and I think that's fair.
And they do get a permit for that?
Yeah, oh yeah, it's, it is permitted and it's, and it's... Yes, it is. And so you're, that's a good point that we need to look at as, as we move forward and let's, here again, get you guys together, let's get some, see where we are there. And then that would be something that we would need to really get on top of before it starts, you know, because look, we, we advertise Walker Rocks. We want people to come and, and visit, but we want it to be in a controlled way, like you said, the right areas, the right zoning and those things. So, so, so yeah, with that, I would...
We'll get down to our new...
Okay, yeah, 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 we're just, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Getting ahead of the game.
Your light is on your cell phone, sir.
Oh, okay. Oh, yeah, wow. Okay, anyone else who wants to speak on this one? Yeah, please come up and state your name.
Exactly. Angela Pence. We actually, the Walker County Chamber, so, went out and visited their resort. And it is worth every single one of y'all taking a trip out there and looking at, you know? I definitely hear their concerns for sure. And I'm not here to say one way or the other, but I was, it, like, when we planned to go out there, actually the Chukamaka Leeds Group and the Chamber both have been out there. And when we walked through that, it is, it's really cool what they're doing there and what they've done with the people that were already there and how they're investing back into the community and what they're trying to do. So I, I think every one of you should go out there and, and visit it and see what their vision is and what their... vision is and what they're talking about doing and work with them to, to see that because that was her whole spiel for like two hours. When we went out there both times was how they were trying to get back into the community. So it's worth, worth checking out.
Very good.
Thank you.
Anyone else speak on this one? Okay, we're going to move forward then on our agenda. So under new businesses, where we'll take action out on these, so West requests a variance for less than five acres and an A1 agricultural zone for property located at 2164 Corinth Road, Lafette, Georgia, 30728. Tax map and parcel number zero dash zero, excuse me, zero dash four nine nine dash zero one eight. What's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I review the medical documentation. It certainly meets the guidelines for hardship, so I would like to make a motion to approve variance for this property.
Okay, so we have a motion from Commissioner Stoltz to approve the, the variance request. Do we have a second to that motion?
Second.
Have a second from Commissioner Blake Moore. Any further discussion of the board? Okay, we got the right one here. Any further discussion?
I, I would just state that it was, it was sent to us approved by the planning commission.
Six to two, yes. Correct.
Okay, so any further discussion? All right. Hearing none, all in favor of approving this request, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, it says approved as requested. Approved as submitted.
Can I ask, I ask a question on that?
Yes, sir.
A public comment or the other session?
Yeah, please, please come up, there's somebody honking here. Yeah, go ahead, we'll let you speak.
Jamie Holsey, I won't have to say my name one day, right? On this variance hardship, when we're allowing under five acres, you know, raw for hardship, batteries, things like that. So if somebody passes away there or whatever, should that resort back to a single residence on five acre? It won't be a hardship anymore? I'm not looking down the road, sorry, y'all. But at some point revert back to what zoning, zoning costs.
It's my understanding that the variance stays with the property once it's granted.
But the reason is because of the residence.
That is correct. That is the reason, but you asked about the variance, so.
Well, I know.
I think what you're saying is that this, when, when God forbid, when Ms. West passes away.
Yeah, yeah, I didn't want to say that.
Right. Does it go back to, with it not having a variance? I do not think so. I think the variance stays with the property.
As currently, yes.
Quick question though, could we, can we not, could we not allow the variance but have it to expire if the property changed hands or that need, that hardship was, is that a caveat that we could?
It's not a consideration courtesy helping people out. I agree with that, but going back to a normal setting, we still are for preserving agriculture, having five acres per home, things like that.
I agree with you, but I, I think the answer is no. I'd have to talk to John about it again, but I, I think the way I understand it, I'm not a lawyer by any means, but I think it stays with the property once it's granted.
Well, I, I, I believe that's the procedure, that, that is, that is, you're exactly right now, but I want to, I want to know, I want us to, to, to look into whether the board has the ability to add the caveats that it would expire when the hardship expired.
And again, not questioning ever hardship comes in. We go by what people say, we trust this sort of thing, but it, you know, say somebody trusts them, well, I got an aunt and uncle and so, 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 and you get five, six trailers or one in there and then you all of a sudden have a trailer park. So resorting back and satisfying the need that the county was graciously given to residences, okay, let's resort back to, you know, protecting the area and having a trailer park and having a home on five acre lot. So that's a question maybe for discussion, but no answer, but I think things should go back to be reset if possible. You're the board, you can say yes later.
Good luck.
You're the board, you can vote.
Good, good point. We'll look into that.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Okay, the next one's request for variance for more than six on a private drive on property located at 102 Posen Lane, Chickamauga, Georgia, 30728. Tax map and parcel number zero dash one one zero dash zero zero five. This did come over from the planning and zoning and their recommendation was to deny this request. What's the pleasure of this board?
Do you want to make a motion to support that and deny the request?
So we have a motion by Commissioner Hart to, to deny this request. Do we have a second?
I want to just make one statement, please, real quick. I did, and like I said, Mr. Persley couldn't be here because of family reasons, but he, I, I talked with him right before the meeting just to get an understanding. And he did go out and one of the major concerns there was it is maxed out already and it's a ten, it gets down to as narrow as a 10-foot drive.
Yeah, that's mentioned in the-
And it's just not, it's just not feasible there. Ingress and egress is not really available that needs to be. So that, that, I think that was one of the main reasons, I just wanted to throw that out. So, yes, Brian, I'm sorry, I'll, I'll second your-
Second that motion.
-motion to, to go ahead and, and support the planning commission's decision on that.
Okay, so we have a, a motion and a second by Commissioner Askew. Any further discussion of the board? Hearing none, all in favor of the denying the request, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the request is denied. Okay, the next one is a request for variance for less than five acres in an A1 agricultural zone for property located at 24595 Highway 193, Lafette, Georgia, 30728. Tax map and parcel number zero dash four seven two dash zero zero three. This one come from the planning commission, approval with conditions. This reads motion to approve with approval from the county attorney on the fact that if approved, it would be breaking the 2022 zoning procedure law on granting a variance and the original five acres being put back with a larger track.
My, my opinion, and yes, I, I previewed that, and my legal opinion is that it is not a violation of the law.
So if we have a motion, I guess we need to clarify in the motion that this is to be approved as submitted or being approved with the conditions that the planning commission's asked for or tabled or denied or we just need to be-
Well, I think the planning commission's questions have been answered, have they not, by?
Counsel. Yeah, it was, it was, they, they recommended to approve it with approval from counsel that it was not in violation.
So, so you're saying it's not in violation, correct, there?
That is correct.
Okay, so then I'll make the motion to prove it based on that fact and based on the fact that the planning has already borne unanimously to approve it, so yes, I'll make a-
So would that be approval as submitted or approval with the conditions?
The conditions have been met.
Yeah, there wouldn't be, there wouldn't be any further-
The conditions would just be that the county attorney is saying, yes, it's legal.
That's correct. That's my understanding of the only condition that was out there.
What you got, John?
Would y'all, because there was one other condition.
Yes, please, please come up to the podium since you're on the planning commission. Please state your name.
My name's Zach Chapman, I am on the planning commission and just coming up to clarify that one. There was one other one, so you answered one of the questions. The other one was there were five acres in the middle of the track that the house is on and it was that that five acres be put back in the whole track.
Yes.
Which is what was the plan. So that was the other-
Okay, that was the other caveat?
Yes. And it didn't read the way you, it's probably written, it didn't read right.
Thank you for the clarification because that, that, that didn't-
And that's the plan, I think, that you presented.
Yeah.
So let's put it back into the five acre. Okay, that makes, that makes more sense now. Okay. So thank you for that. So we have a motion, Commissioner Hart, do we have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Commissioner Blake Moore, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries to, to approve. Okay, and then the, the next one was, was withdrawn by the Garrets, so that one there would just be, would be no action. If there's no action taken, then that one would die. And the next one is the Jennifer Tessa requesting conditional use variance for property located at 40 Blessed Way, Springs, Georgia, 30739. Tax map and partial, I believe this is the one you wanted to make a motion to table.
Well, yeah, Commissioner Hart, I think that, I think that that would be the best, the best interest of everybody right now to table it and let everybody get together and then come back with their resolve and see what we can do from their fence agreement with everybody. I'll, I'll make that motion.
Okay, so have a motion to table this until our next meeting by Commissioner Askew. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Hart, further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of tabling, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, we will table this one until the next meeting and be put back on the agenda. Okay, next item on our agenda is our commissioner comments. We'll start out with District One, Mr. Blake Moore, sir.
Just appreciate everybody coming out and getting involved in your government. That helps us make a better decision on what to do. Appreciate all of our county employees for their hard work and dedication. If I can help in any way, call Text Stream, I think.
This guy puts me on the spot every time because he's hard to follow. That, that's, you know, thanks for, for the participation, guys, that getting, getting some conversation between things and talking about it helps us tremendously here. It's hard to get all the facts out in, in a short time, but it does help tremendously. Thanks for participation. Thanks to all the, like I said, all the employees. Chief Hodge, thank you for working diligently to get this thing going up there on that fire department. We appreciate that, so just thanks to everybody. Appreciate y'all coming out, look forward to seeing you next time.
Pretty good.
Yes, I agree with everything said there. I want to shout out to the landfill crew, they helped us with a special project this week, so pain is already left, but I thanked them before the meeting, so we got a good crew out there. Thanks for that, Robert.
Appreciate everybody coming out tonight. Just want to say thank you to our road department, our emergency services, our sheriff's department, worked very hard and diligently during the cold weather, did a wonderful job, saw you guys out working and tried to give you the thumbs up, but you's too busy, didn't see me, so just appreciate all the hard work and thanks to all of our county employees. Appreciate your dedication, the hard work and just thanks for making Walker County a better place. Thank you.
What about the weather radio program?
Weather radio program will be February 3rd at the Wild Game Supper at the Cove Community Center. And Chief, we will have how many weather radios?
100.
100. Is it first come, first served?
Yes, they were all, they were all, they're delivered and, and programmed with that.
Okay, so if you would like a weather radio and would like to eat some wonderful food and make a charitable donation, it's a great event. Had it for years, it's a, it's a great event where the community comes together and has a wonderful dinner, so I would encourage anyone who would like to come, come have a meal and possibly get a weather radio. Back to you, James.
Additionally, I will like to mention, talking about weather and some of the weather events that we've had, want to remind everybody about our Sirene GPS app that you can download on your smartphone. It's a free app, you can get off the Google Play Store or the Apple Store. And we push out a lot of notifications with that about public safety, road closures, if we have delays in the county schedule as far as buildings being open due to ice or snow. But also it's tied into the National Weather Service and so if they push out a warning alert due to weather, whether it be tornado, flooding, these type of things, it's an automated pass-through through that system. So within milliseconds, it's sending out emails and text messages to your device and so you're getting instant notification faster than the local news stations can get queued up and come online and tell us that there's a, a warning been issued. You're going to already have it way before they have the time just to get on the air. So it's a free service to all of our residents because the county pays an annual fee for that subscription and then we're able to send out additional messages as well. So it's, it's a great feature to have. I think we have about close to 6,000 people signed up, but the, you know, the county of almost 70,000 people, there's probably 40,000 smartphones out there, I would say, if not more. So we still have a lot of people, we need to get signed up on that, so please check that out as we get into this season of uncertainty.
What's the name of that app?
It's called Sirene GPS and there's also some information on our Facebook page about it, or if you need help or assistance, you can call the office and we have staff member that can help you. Yes?
My name is Frankie, so I just want to verify the date of the next council.
The, the meetings here are the second and fourth Thursdays of the month at 6:30. Second and fourth Thursday of the month. So you got to watch for the months that have five Thursdays in them. That comes up about once a quarter.
Throws everybody off.
Throws it awful weak, so it's the second and fourth Thursdays now at 6:30. Okay.
I believe we have another question.
Yes, sir.
And say about, about orange yield, I, you'll, y'all, if she, a sister-in-law moved down there on our land, did something happen to my mother-in-law, did they got to pick up and move off or they, or, or could they stay?
No, yours they can stay. On yours, they can stay.
Yours was approved and not, and they can stay.
Yeah, but they, we ever stayed, something ever happened to my mother-in-law?
Yes.
Okay, I, I didn't know, I, I got confused with what, what he was saying, I'm sorry, but-
No, that's okay. Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Do we have a need for-
And I appreciate that, all y'all.
Thank you.
We have a need for executive session?
I would like to recommend a brief executive session for real estate.
Okay.
That's your call. I can't make the recommendation. It's up to y'all if you want to do the rest.
I'm sorry.
He's a personnel in real estate.
Okay, so we have a motion to go into executive session for personnel in real estate?
Yes.
From Commissioner Blake Moore, do we have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Commissioner Hart, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.